It is five forty, and so I will call the special June meeting of Newton Town Council to order. All right, let's pause for a moment of reflection and then we'll do the pledge. Joe, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just for all.
Willie, you want to lead us in our tournational forum?
Okay, Steve Denny.
Here.
Shane Davis. Jerry Burmeister.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Jennifer Roberts.
Here.
Marissa Gage.
Here.
Okay, it is, the only order of business tonight is introduction of the water rate study, and with us tonight are Buzz Crone and Brendan from Crone and Associates, who are going to bring, take us through our water rate study. So with that, I will turn it over to you guys.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, and nice to see everybody. We've got a little gap coming in here, Joe. But my name's Buzz Crone and Brandon Barthol. He's gonna go through some of the financial calculations and so forth with you, but I thought I'd start on just sort of a bigger picture overview and go to the first slide there. I guess to kick things off, it's been over nineteen years since your current water rates were established back in two thousand and four. And I think we look back and that probably had a base year of two thousand and two. So it's really been almost twenty years, but just looking at big picture wise, nineteen years of compounded inflation over three, at three percent is about seventy-five percent. So that kind of puts in perspective. And a lot of times when you're talking about percentages, you know, when you start with small numbers, percentages sound more sensational than the actual dollars and cents. But well, with given that, again, there's been user-based growth since two thousand and four, obviously. But the rate structure has remained stagnant. There's been subsidies, obviously, from your general fund and your tax increment financing program that your TIF funds have been paying off the bonds that were issued back in twenty fifteen, I believe. And so the we looked at, you know, phasing that out as part of, part of this, but Brandon will probably touch on that when we get into the more of the details. But and when I say general fund subsidy, focusing on the municipal hydrant rental fees and hydrant rental is kind of a confusing term. You're not really renting hydrants. It doesn't have really much to do with the cost of the hydrant. It's really the capacity that's built into your system, your distribution system to provide fire flow capability, your storage towers, the size of your distribution lines and so forth. That's really where the significant capital costs of your water system lie. That's a good reason to have it too. Obviously, that's certainly a critical part of providing for the public health and welfare of your community. And so what, one of the things that we talked about with Marissa and Scott was to try to get away from the general fund going forward on having them continue to bear that cost out of your limited tax dollars. This is a pretty common technique that, you know, I don't know if I could say most water, municipal water utilities have done so already. But I'm old and I remember back in nineteen eighty-one when Indianapolis Water Company was going through rate adjustments, City of Indianapolis couldn't afford to keep up with the fire hydrant payments, you know, the public hydrant payment. So they made some special rules for the City of Indianapolis. A lot of times that's the way it happens. They give different rules than everybody else, but then it wasn't too long after that that they extended that to all water utilities where the communities could have the option of passing on that public fire protection cost in the form of a monthly fee instead of having it paid for out of property tax dollars or the, you know, more than property tax. Now you've got local income tax and other things, but but those are pretty limited resources that you have very little control over. Water rates, electric rates, you've got a lot more direct control over, over what to factor into those particular fees. And so that's, that was one of the key things that was, was brought up in, you know, in our kickoff meetings with with Scott and Marissa that we wanted to try to get that out of the general fund. Some of the other subsidies had to do with allocation of wage and salaries. Oftentimes that had been, that, you know, they're one of the, they realigned basically in twenty twenty-two, I believe, was the first full year that you had all of those costs sort of realigned the way that the town feels they're best allocated between electric, water, street department, et cetera. So we use twenty twenty-two as our base year and build on that for our rate study. Yeah, the town's at a point where it wants to eliminate all those other subsidies and have the utilities foot the bill for their, their costs of each, providing each service. Again, to go for nineteen years without a rate adjustment, that's pretty amazing, especially for a water utility. The, and some of the other reasons to eliminate these cost assumptions, obviously, the town general fund has limited resources, especially with property tax caps and levy, controlled funds, so forth. The TIF program has a limited life also. That doesn't go on forever. So we wanted to get the utilities all standing on their, on their own two feet. I think we talked about the realignment of the employee cost by each municipal department. Shifting of those, again, instead of calling it hydrant charges, I like to call it fire protection capacity fees. That's a more appropriate term, I believe. The, again, I, most of the communities that I work with have done this at, at some point in time. And like I said, eventually, we may want to consider eliminating those TIF subsidies as well. But I think you've got a lot of potential growth for some of the new areas that you've taken on. I know what they annexed all the land down north of Ingles. That was a, a big opportunity for growth. And I think you're seeing some, some growth in other areas where there's some large developers that are in the wings to add a lot of housing projects. So with that, let's jump to the next slide. Well, municipal water rates are governed by Indiana code. Code citation. I'm not trying to impress you. This, I only work with two of these codes very often, but the water code is eight dash one point five dash three point eight. And that sets forth the statutory revenue requirements that you shall include in your water rates. I like to emphasize the, there are certain revenue requirements that they use in the code. It says shall be sufficient. Obviously, the cash operation maintenance expenses, the day-to-day costs of producing and providing water, distributing it, debt service on bonds and other indebtedness. Right now, you've got the TIF program sort of covering a a fairly significant chunk of that, of that, of those particular requirements. You also have debt service reserve requirements and working capital requirements. And then I sort of put these two together, depreciation and allowance for replacements and improvements. Those, those are really the, the revenue requirements that statute uses the term shall, and I can call that a mandatory requirement. And then the additional provisions where you may include additional requirements, including payment taxes, which you have that on your radar screen here or are making, I believe you're making payments to the taxes today. And then a return on plant. Now, that's something we're not really get into with your rates, but those are some of the additional requirements that can be included in the municipal rate formula. But again, we're not talking about earning a return on plant with your water utility. If you want to take over here, I'm gonna let Brandon kind of go through the, the process here that we've taken and then go through some of the numbers.
Sure. Thanks, Buzz. So, so I'm Brandon. Been consulting with Crone for a few years now. A lot of my expertise is in water and sewer rate studies specifically. It kind of just put me in this niche and, and that's where I am. So I think what would be good here is if anyone who wants to follow along with the presentation, I'll kind of be going back and forth from the presentation and the report as well. So, you know, referencing some of the numbers in there. So the rate study process is essentially, there's, there's three parts to it. The first is the historical financials. What we did is we looked at your revenues and expenses from twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. And like Buzz mentioned, twenty twenty-two is the test year where we really look at twenty twenty-two and use that moving forward for our assumptions. There's supplementary information. There's a few other schedules that help us get an overall better understanding of the utility as a whole. So those are kind of the next piece of the rate study. And lastly, the results are kind of the most important part of the rate study is the pro forma financial information. So what we do here is we look at your, your previous historical financials, make, we've made assumptions. We've also received feedback from the town and then going forward, we create revenue requirements. So this would be the expenses that the rates need to be able to sustain financially. So in doing so, then we look at your revenues, what happened in twenty twenty-two, and then the difference essentially is, would be the rate increase. So first, I want to go through your historical financials. So in the report, we'll be looking at page two. We can stay on this slide here for, for actually the next slide, sorry. Yeah, so we'll look at the historical financials. So some points here. So page two is your balance sheet. What we have here is your utility plan service. This would be the historical cost of your plant. So likely replacement costs of, where we have a twenty twenty-two, about six point one million. It likely would be two to three times that if you had to replace everything in the plant. Twelve to eighty billion is realistically would be more of a, a value of the, the plan as a whole, your cash and investment. So these are each of your water utility funds. So the operating fund stays pretty stagnant. It looks like each month transfers are made from the operating fund into these other funds of depreciation or capital improvement. So it looks like all that excess cash is really going in that capital improvement fund. Most utilities don't do this and they should. So I think, I think kudos to you for being on top of that and, you know, having an actual established fund for capital expenses. It makes things a lot easier for everyone. And then you've got your long-term debt. So there's two point seven million dollars principal outstanding on those bonds that are currently, currently being paid out by TIF revenues. So those will be ensuring the principal, last principal and interest on those is January of twenty thirty-one. So about eight more years left on that. So if we move on to page three, the income statement, we'll stay on this slide. Thank you. So we're looking at your twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty twenty-two revenues and expenses. Also, we call them receipts and dispersments, which is the cash terms for revenues and expenses. So your operating receipts, the, the major revenue source for the utilities, of course. So what is the rates and charges for the customers? So that's that top line there. So it's grown from about eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand to a little over a million dollars. There hasn't been any rate increases. So what that's really just been from customer growth. As for your operating dispersments, if you look at the totals here, I think that tells a good picture of how, how it's changed from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. It's, it's jumped from about seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars, along with the reallocation of expenses. Everywhere, all utilities across the state of Indiana are seeing major increases in their expenses. And what happens essentially is if your revenues are staying the same and the expenses are increasing, what happens is essentially that gap between them will, will close and close. And it gets to a point where if you don't do anything, then you're running a deficit and that's where you're eating away at your cash and then problems can arise. So luckily Pendleton does have some growth, which is, which is helping, you know, keep these funds going. So below your operating dispersments here, we have your non-operating receipt and dispersion. So you have some additional revenues from system development charges and capacity fees due to that growth, capital outlays. So that would be expenses that came out of your depreciation fund or your capital improvement fund. So that's separate from operating, like Buzz mentioned before. It's kind of, you got, you got your operating expenses. Then you've got your allowance for depreciation and working capital. So, you know, that those have, those expenses would go more towards that category. But overall, we can see the increase. There's been an increase each year from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two of two hundred and thirty thousand, two ninety, and then three hundred and twenty-five thousand, mostly because of that growth in those proceeds. I do want to mention though, I think that twenty twenty-one is a little bit overstated and that's because it looks like there was a transfer in from the electric utility that, that wasn't necessarily reconciled. So in reality, your, your operating, your net operating revenues are would have been closer to a hundred and seventy K. So that's just something that we wanted to point out as we went through this, these financial statements. It looks like technically the water utility could owe the electric utility a hundred and twenty thousand. And that's, that's not necessarily a problem, but it's just something that we saw and wanted to, you know, bring to your attention. So there's what we have, what we have for your historical financials. But if we move on to the next slide here, we'll go into some of your supplemental schedules. So this is, we're looking at page four of the report. This shows your minimum reserves required. This compares what your fund balances are and any shared water funds and compares that to what they need to be according to the bond ordinance. So ba- based on our, our review and comparing that to the bottom ordinance for the twenty fifteen bonds, these balances are all in good standing. We move on to page five. And we'll stay on here for a few more here. Your twenty fifteen revenue bonds, those are being paid on TIF. This shows the schedule on those. So the, the last payment there is January one, twenty thirty-one, and that's about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year. So another way to think of it is the, the water utility essentially doesn't have to pay three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year because of that TIF. So if we think back to the income statement, if the water utility was making those payments, then they would have been losing cash each year because that outweighs pretty much the, the growth that, that you were seeing in your cash. So it's good that the TIF is able to do that, you know, for now. But I think, like Buzz mentioned, you know, the town might be wanting to get away from that. So it's something to consider here in the future. We move on to page six, where we look at your water billing data. So these are kind of the percentages of your, your customer, your customer base. So about sixty-five percent is residential, a quarter of that is commercial, and you've got a handful of industrial, industrial and then a few government accounts. So the industrial customers, and there's only seven of them, but they, they do, they do make up, you know, almost nine or 10% of your flows. So it looks like the, you know, the last year that the utility billed about a million bucks and it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand or a hundred and forty-seven million gallons billed. We move on to page seven of the report. We've got your line loss and just say one, one more slide, stay on the, the previous slide. It's there. Yeah. So your line loss was thirty-seven percent. So what this means is when we're comparing the gallons produced by the utility to what was actually billed, there was a thirty-seven percent difference. Um.
Can you say that one more time?
So the gallons produced by the utility, compare that to the gallons that are actually billed. And there's a thirty-seven percent loss difference. So all utilities, all water utilities everywhere, they have some sort of line loss. So I think what this can mean for you, for you all is that, you know, look, looking at this line losses, if you replace meters, that, that's a way to, to, you know, tighten up the system a bit.
Yeah, it'll help that. But there's obviously, if you have a whole distribution system, you know, finding leaks and so forth, this, and I'm, I'm pretty sure you're Scott and Brian that are on top of that. But they know the, the rule of thumb, you're, you're probably gonna lose five to eight percent just flushing hydrants and things of that nature, routine maintenance. But thirty-seven percent is a little bit
That's extreme.
I've seen worse.
We had a major incident out here at Hudson Farms last year and it drained our water tanks.
Yeah, one of them.
We lost a lot right in the ditch. So that was a real unusual. Drain it, yeah.
And there's consistency.
Yeah, there's a consistency.
Well, I can say consistency too. We looked at the water loss audit, which is the same calculations from twenty twenty-one, and it was just about exactly thirty-seven percent as well. So what can I, what I can say from twenty-one to twenty-two is that it hasn't gotten worse. Like, how can I, how can I make this schedule better here?
Right.
So I think that, that does it for the historical piece, the supplemental piece. Next, so we go on to the next slide here, where we look at the pro forma information, where we set up your revenue requirements and then figure out the rates going there. So there's a lot to digest on this schedule, but I, I think what, what really is the most important, and I know it's a little, little blurry on there, but you could see this on, on the, the rate study, is that we've identified one point three or almost one point four million dollars of operating expenses moving forward. So what you can see in the pro forma and then the adjustments column is each adjustment that we made. So the, the salaries, employee benefits and insurance, there were large increases there due to the reallocation of, you know, switching from seventy, seventy percent electric to thirty and then, you know, getting it to where the, the water utility is, is taking on more of the expense. So a lot, a lot of increases there. And then, you know, some of these other expenses are either related to inflation where it's, it's something that we can foresee increasing. So that would be things like purchased power, chemicals and materials. And then there's other lines that might not necessarily be something where you can really foresee what's going to be spent, like transportation or yeah, insurance, we've got increases there and repairs and maintenance. I mean, we've, we've tried to look at some of your historical data to come up with those numbers. So.
The biggest thing was realigning of wage and salaries between the various departments to see that those are the three biggest shifts for the water utility. Again, we're looking forward, you know, we're already almost through twenty-three, twenty-four. Headlights are now, so hopefully, hopefully these are conservative numbers as far as what you expect.
So along with the, the pro forma dispersments moving forward, we've also identified your base costs. So.
You want me to, let me, let me kind of, one of the, one of the things we, we looked at was the difference between your top rate block and your bottom rate block and looking at the initial rate blocks are seven, starts at seven dollars and sixty-five cents a thousand. And then when you get down to over a certain threshold, you're selling water for two dollars and twenty-eight cents a thousand gallons. Wanted to, to look at certain costs that are in your operating budget that we want to make sure everybody is contributing towards. And call this sort of a base cost analysis. We didn't set the rate at exactly this number that we've identified here. But we wanted to use this as a basis to consider eliminating some of those bottom rate steps. Back in the early days of water rates, you had a number of declining meter rate blocks where the more you use, the less you pay. And that, or recent trends have been sort of the other way around. In fact, conservation rates oftentimes pay, if you use over a certain threshold, you might pay more than what you do to that certain threshold. But this was really just sort of a step to eliminate that differential between the the lower usage meter blocks and the, the higher volume usually. You only have a couple of customers that really use more than thirty thousand gallons or so anyway. But we thought this was a good time to, to look at narrowing that gap and eliminating a couple of those rate steps so that we didn't have so many of those. We'll make sure that any new customer that, that is a large user is still going to be contributing a certain amount to the those base costs. For instance, the way, the biggest ones are wages, employee benefits and employee health insurance and those things. So we only, we assume that about half of that is really related to water production. So we, we didn't, if you took all of your costs divided by the gallons you sell, it'd be a lot higher. But, but and then we used fraction of some of the other categories. Power cost is another one that, you know, takes a lot of power to pump the water up out of the wells throughout the distribution system. So that one, chemicals, those are things that assumed a hundred percent of that should be paid for by every rate, every rate line. But we came up with four dollars and seventy-five cents, and I think our proposed bottom rate step now is four dollars and seventy-five cents. So we wanted to sort of overprove our case in the event that we did have any pushback from the one or two customers that, that are affected there. But at any rate, if we were going to see Jenny at the I U R C, it would be a lot more sophisticated analysis that we'd have to go through. But these, these are things that are really sort of functional, market-driven and then just sort of common sense, things that we felt that, that is appropriate move to take at this point.
What number did you say was industrial and commercial? I realize we don't have different customer classes within this. That would be a cost of service study. But as we grow, that's why we're
There's only like two or three.
I know there's not many on the large.
There's seven industrial and an average of two hundred and two, commercial, an average of fifteen government. Yeah, it's page six. Yeah, that's the billing breakdown.
I did mean that.
Oh, I see the jungle network.
Yes.
So kind of where we, we wrap everything up is essentially the revenue requirements where we're looking at here on the, on the rate study as well as the presentation. So the, in the rate study, you see option one and two, what, what we're proposing here today and what's in the ordinance is the option one rate. So the difference between those two, what you're seeing here and what's on the report, option two considers paying that additional three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of principal and interest on the, on the TIF bond. So, you know, we're, we're going away from that for now. So we're, we're looking at option one. So we've got the one million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of operating expense that I mentioned. And then we also have an improvements allowance of working capital, three thousand, or three hundred thousand. So the total revenues required that the rates need to make up is And then we also have an improvements allowance of working capital, three thou, or three hundred thousand. So the total revenues required that the rates need to make up is, um. One million, six hundred ninety thousand or thirty dollars. So then we look at your revenues, um, kind of the next group there of, um. You know, what happened in twenty twenty two and some of these, what some of the adjustments that we made. Um, so we've got your metered sales that came in. About a million bucks. And then you have, um, additional revenues from eliminated rate blocks. So that was what Buzz was mentioning, how. If, if you look on the, on the next page where you actually look at the rates, you'll see that those last two rate blocks are removed. So. That, but if that had happened in twenty twenty two, it would have brought an additional twenty two thousand dollars of revenue. So we made that adjustment there. And then, um, we also eliminated the private hydrant charge, uh, which was four hundred fifty one dollars and forty four cents per hydrant. So it was the same for private. And public. So the private's going away and then, um, the hydro rental that, that, um, the rates will be able to sustain with the monthly fire protection charge is a hundred forty three thousand dollars. So. We broke this out by your EDUs. So it's an equivalent dwelling unit. So residents are, are worth one. And then, um, those larger meters have, um, larger EDU or EDU ratios. So, um, what we came up with is. If you have that rate for a, a resident set of five dollars and then with the rest of your, um, your customers, that, that's how much revenue that it would, um, generate. So a hundred forty three thousand.
Business with a two inch meter, we pay fifty dollars a month.
And I don't think we have any customers that have above a two inch meter current. Is that correct?
Eight's.
Yeah.
And then. One inch and two inch. And that's, you've got those other rates that are on there, three, four, five and six.
In case of future use.
No one ever.
Right.
Has used those at first point.
Let me just expand it since, uh, Jenny and I were chatting before the meeting started about the. Private hydrants. And that was something, you know, I know the school has a number of hydrants that they would be built for, and then some of the other. Uh, larger commercial or industrial customers have private hydrants. And I think that, uh. Scott wanted to sort of just get away with that since we're, we, we end up with about the same level of revenue. As we currently are getting combined municipal and private hydrant, uh, revenue. Starting at that five dollar, uh, baseline amount. I guess there's been other things with stormwater rates and other things that he just felt that. It's not a need to really. Continue the private hydrant. So just bringing that up, I know. Jenny had some thoughts on that.
And I agree too, um, as far as having private. Because they unduly puts. That amount on to your other users and they should share part of that.
They, they do pay for the hybrid when it goes in.
But for the capacity.
They're also paying, what, forty two dollars a month with tax for that private hydrant. Separate bill.
That's about what it is. Yeah.
Yes.
About right, yeah. So that, that, that's in the proposal. That was something that, you know, we had talked about. Since the time stamp point, it was something that, uh. Scott felt that, uh, you know. Something that they can absorb by just rolling it all in the. Month of charge. They'll still be paying fifty dollars a month. Yes, you could argue that since they have private hydrants, they don't necessarily benefit from the. In, in the big picture, it's not. Significant financial hit one way or the other, but it is a change that is on the table. Something that Jenny zeroed right in on. So I, I thought we should at least bring it up. Make sure everybody is aware that that's what is on the table or something that you want to change. We're fine.
Making shirts though.
All right. So, yeah, we've, we've got all those adjustments that we refer to. There's also utility receipt tax. So that. Was last year when the rates decreased by one point four percent. That is included there as well as the docs from twenty twenty two. Uh, so. Then you have, we have tap fees, property rental and other revenues. We, we decided to leave out your system development charges and your capacity fees and because those are not. Necessarily, um, you know, we can't say for sure that's gonna happen. So I think really what we're seeing on the revenue requirements is more from an operation side. Uh, that's typically their approach we take with rates is, is really looking at operating revenues and expenses rather than, and then leaving out some of those other, um, non-recurring revenues that are not.
Can't count on rural overpass. It was back in two thousand eight when all the houses stopped, you know, so we went to the rates to sustain themselves. Those other fees are really there. Line extensions and orange towers and that's the. Dream plant wells and so forth. So. It's typically not factored into the retail rate setting. Although that really in the past, that's why you've had positive cash flows. Those, those fees and those fees are terrific because that saves all of your existing rate payers that are right here. Bear the cost.
Certainly, it certainly helped, you know, keep the rates the same from two thousand four to today. Um, so. That, that kind of wraps everything up. And, and what we come up with here is, um, you know, looking at the test year, a four thousand gallon bill is at twenty nine dollars and three cents. So. A thirty seven percent increase on that is a jump set up about eleven dollars. So thirty nine dollars ninety six cents. And then there's also the fire protection charge. It's monthly, we mentioned too. So residents would see that as well. So it'd be increasing, um, about sixteen bucks. Um, so. When you put that into consideration, the rates staying the same since two thousand four, really for. Of a normal customer, they're seeing essentially about an eighty cent increase from two thousand four today. If you take. In today's increase divided by the time you, yeah, since the year. So, um. That's what I have on the rate studies. There's just a few more slides here that are really just comparisons and, and we don't have to get too deep into that, but really just, we can just look, um, just the next slide here is, um. These might be, be good as handouts here in the future. If, if anyone's questioning, I mean, I'll have, what's gonna happen to me, you know, this, this is should help answer that. So this is a, a residential. Uh, usage comparison. So this is not with the fire protection charge. This is solely. Do you use three thousand gallons? What's, what's that gonna do to your bill? So three thousand is the minimum. So, um, over there in the right hand column, that shows your change. Uh, so we've got most residents around you, three, four, or five thousand gallons. Uh, there's commercial customers that also have five inch meter and the, the meter size really. It, it'll only affect if you're at the minimum. So, um, you know, some of your, your smaller commercial, they're probably in that thirty to forty thousand gallon range. So, um. Those would be the increases that they would see. And if you want to go on to the next slide here, we have, um, some of your larger users. So a two inch meter. Their minimum charge is forty four thousand gallons. So that would be the difference here for some of your large, larger customers. I think. I believe there's only two customers that, that even hit over five thousand or five hundred thousand gallons a month. So, um. Obviously bigger numbers, you're, you're seeing larger increases there. Um. And then the last slide here, I think, um, will be useful as well, you know, just, just for the public, just to have an understanding of how. Pendleton's usage rates compare with other communities. Unlike, and I think that if we were to have gone with option two. And it's a, it's a little harder to, to show that, you know, that, how that compares to other communities. Um, so I, I think that. Option two being at fifty one dollars, that would have been on the high side. Um, typically what we see is the, the smaller communities. Are just at a disadvantage because they don't have as many customers to spread across the expense. So some of the, those larger. Four thousand gallon bills are, are places where they, they might have, um, one to two thousand people or less. Um. So then seeing that the Pendleton's option one rates are at thirty dollars, thirty nine dollars and ninety six cents, you can see how that compares to other communities around Pendleton. So. I think that's all we have here for the, the rate study and the presentation. If anyone has any questions. We'd like to address those at this time. Anyone that's any question about the rate study or how we came up with any of these numbers.
Questions from the council for Brandon or Buzz?
Your, uh. Comparison here on the last page. If you look at the usage for our customers and come over to that four thousand, you just picked that.
The, that's, that's sort of a statewide benchmark that they use with grant programs and the state public fund. Your, your actual average was about forty seven hundred gallons. You just took. There's a lot of minimum users in that average and then.
Okay.
Four thousand is sort of the benchmark that's used. For comparative purposes when, when you're looking at. That's sort of, that, that was, that's why we. Use that on this particular slide. You're in that ballpark. My, my wife is an above average water.
So a standard, how many, four to five people are generally in that. Four thousand gallon to five thousand. And then you have a lot that. Are under. Single people.
Usually twenty, as a general rule, about twenty percent of your residential customers are minimal users. As a general rule and. Above average customers. Everybody thinks they're average. Lot of swing coming up with the average. Your arithmetic average is forty seven hundred gallons for residential customers. You've got, you've got a lot of pretty lawns, a pretty flowers.
And a wife, and a wife that washes two loads a day for outfitters. So, yeah, it keeps it pretty busy.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
That's the thing that I noticed comparing all these numbers and trying to digest them and make them look like a real world application. The, the wide swing between the minimal user and the absorbent user is really hard to digest. Any other questions?
There was one other issue that we kicked around with Jeff a little bit about whether you have a, a thousand dollar capacity fee. Six hundred dollar tap fee. And a thousand dollar capacity fee that hasn't been changed since about that same time. With the growth that you're experiencing. Some of the things that are. Sort of earmarked coming down the pipe. We thought that might be, that might be a consideration. It doesn't affect any of your current customers. But, uh, it, it would affect developers coming in to. Tap into your capacity that, that your current customers paid for over the last twenty, thirty, forty years. Uh, and so. We thought somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars. Sort of seventy fifty. So we thought might be an appropriate consideration for. Increasing your water capacity. Can't be really discover some costs that go on our perspective.
Yeah. So in theory tapping cap currently is sixteen hundred. It would go to twenty three fifty if we increased capacity, correct?
That was another thing we, I think that's left blank in the draft ordinance.
To fill in what we wanted to do. And that comes from a separate ordinance in two thousand and three, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That, the ordinance exhibit eight was put together by. The ordinance itself, the body does contemplate raising that as it, I, I took out the portion where it doesn't affect.
Okay.
We'd like to do that today or not today, but.
Put it in the ta, put it on the table for.
The public hearing.
Got it.
It is a form to do. If we don't want to do that, it takes mental.
Okay. Any other questions from the council or those are granted? Any feedback from the public? Come on up, Jenny.
Jenny, Susan, just a quick couple of things. And I know I emailed most of you. Um. Let me see where I want to start here. Just a couple of things with, um, growth. I know growth doesn't always happen, but I do feel like we have enough and. There's a projected amount that maybe we could have looked at some customer growth adjustments for revenues, which would drive down the overall cost. Without run, having documentation and running those numbers, I don't know if it's immaterial or. So again, I don't know if that would make a material difference or not. I know we've been out for so long. Um. So we're really playing catch up, which leads me to state that twenty years out of rates, I know it's not. On most of you or all of you, um, your time, but. We can't have that happen again. Um, a utility has to be solvent for itself. As a municipality, there are some other. Such as tap fees that you can, uh, help offset. The cost that it really gives a false rate to the rate payer, which then ends up in a rate shock. As you could see by the option number two, this is why we should not use tip money. For any of our capital improvement projects in the future. If, again, a utility needs to be self-sustaining, that's when municipalities get into issues. Those tip monies really need to go to the other things that they can help for the municipality. The rates need to speak for themselves for the cost of the good. Um. In the future, and not necessarily this, since we're going with, possibly going with the first presentation instead of the second. Um, phasing in in the future that could go over several years. A rate study is typically good three to five years. So we want to make sure this takes care of the next three to five years. And this does not. I'm not suggesting on this round, um, making additional changes as far as. More increases, but things that this does not include is. The capital improvement projects that are identified. And having that capital improvement plan. So in the next five years, what are we projecting? Um, are there things we're going to need? But then what about the replacements? Also building in the asset management plan as part of that pipe replacement. Point five percent every year should be replaced. And we need to think about that with the water loss. The benchmark for being concerned is fifteen percent. And we're at thirty seven. So we need to talk about a leak detection program, which again comes at a cost. We need to identify that because you are increasing purchased power, purchased chemicals. Because we are producing this, pushing it out in the system, but we're losing thirty seven percent. And as we grow, then we'll be producing more water and. Again, that will come at a cost. So we really could control. Some of those adjustments had our water loss gone down. And I know when we did a rate study four years ago, it was still. Around that thirty seven percent benchmark. Um, periodic maintenance as well is not built into this. So basically this is just covering. The, the cost. It's meeting the revenue requirements without anything additional. Um, I do. I do think we should think about the private fire. Again. Just looking at the utility, nothing else that's gone on. If you're building fire protection in for one set of customer class, you should do it for all. Some other things with, I'll jump back to periodic maintenance. I know there are things in the next three to five years that will need to be done, do we have that money built in here to deal with those? I, I know one of our towers, I see, it's dark. I don't know if it's just needs washed, which is a periodic maintenance expense, so things that don't occur annually. You have to again think about five months or three to five years out. And let me see, sorry, I made notes all over this when I was reading it. I think a few things were explained that I had on. I'm in, in the future, something else to consider is again adding different customer classes as we grow. We don't want to get into a situation where we have. Large industry, large industrial. Being offset by your residential, and I know other communities are facing that. And it really makes for that industrial to want to leave. It, it's just better to build in prior, so that's something to think about in the future as well. Because, again, those different classes, it goes through a cost of service study. What it does is they demand a lot of water, and you have to build for your peak. Which is at a large cost, and it should not be offset by the others, so. I always want to look at these things with, are we treating each class equally? So there's no inequities built in here, so that's another area that. As we grow, we really need to think about, and. I, I don't know if it was explained, we didn't always have capacity fees. Or system development fees until a year and a half ago.
Two, almost two years ago.
So that's kind of recent, which has helped, so if you look at that number. And had we not approved that, it wouldn't be there to access, so again, a lot of general comments. We've been out twenty years and we can't do that in the future, so again, the benchmark is three to five to keep up with inflation. And I think each year in looking at our numbers, those are, these things we need to discuss. And I think that's it.
Thanks Jenny.
There are, there are some funds in there for current, the last couple of years, we've averaged a little over thirty thousand a year, so. Talking. Some of the preliminary discussions. The tanks weren't a big issue right now, I guess, to understand that the storage towers were. Painted in the last. Four or five years. But those are points worth, worth taking. In terms of some of the capital projects, they've got about one point six million now in that. Construction fund or capital fund. That's no doubt from. System of charge. That's charged, so. But good points, good points.
Are we able to hear Scott? Maybe, he raised his hand. While we're waiting to see if he's still. Aspirin, okay, on this pro forma, we have a hundred and forty three thousand dollars earmarked, or not earmarked, but. Anticipated revenue for the hydrant fees. Or the fire protection fees, I guess is what we're actually calling it, and we've done that math and that equals out to, based on meter size. That's what that ma, that's what that runs out to.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, so if you look at the rates on the following page, at the bottom where it's got, it shows meter size and it shows BD ratio. And then we pretty much plugged it in.
This one, page ten. So knowing that we don't have any capacity currently that is over, or not capacity, but maybe it's over a two inch meter. The most anybody's going to pay monthly is fifty.
So there's eight, so there's, we, we were provided nineteen forty four, the number.
Right.
So eighteen thirty six or five eight to three four. And then for one inch meters are seventy of them, and then for two inch meters, it's thirty eight of them, so then, what we did was. We said, we pretty much kind of backed into the five dollars.
Yeah, that's why.
Five dollars here, what's it gonna do?
What pages it, where it says there's so many of each side?
Oh, that's, it's on the other one, but it's, this is, this is the count from Tracy today. No, no, she didn't email it up, I printed it, but it's, it's in here also on page. Maybe it's not.
The math, the math that I did is not.
Is not in there.
I got it right here.
Yeah, so it's eighteen sixty three.
Right.
Is how many people we have at five eight, so if you take that times sixty, because that's five times twelve. You're gonna get a hundred and ten thousand dollarsish.
Well, the thing is too, some of those, some of your commercial customers also have.
Five eights, that's true too.
For the, for the residents, it comes out to a hundred ten thousand dollars from some residents, or from, sorry, five eight or three four. That could be residents, that could also be commercial customers, hundred ten thousand from your small meters, from your one inch meters, it's ten thousand five hundred. And then for your two inch meters, it's twenty two thousand eight hundred, so it comes out to a little over a hundred.
Yeah.
That, that's about the same amount. On those two inch meters, that's about the same amount as the private hydrants are projected to decline, so. Washers out. Washers out of that. Same. Fire protection money that you're currently generating from both. Property taxes and the.
I just wanted, I just wanted to confirm all that, because it wasn't in here, and so I was just trying to do the math, thank you.
Did we ever get Scott? No. He has a. Is there choice to promote him as a panelist, otherwise? Right. He's, okay, probably because he didn't log in as his, as his thing, should we call him? Are we allowed to call him, or? Are you calling him Chris or Mike calling? Okay, I saw your response.
I was logged in on two phones.
Okay, so.
Okay, so my only comment is that, I think. Jenny Sisson was spot on, and the only reason we couldn't probably do all those things that we need to do that she suggested is because. We haven't done anything in twenty years, and it's. Sort of a shock.
It's a big first step.
To raise a rate after twenty years, so.
Yes.
I, we are, we are gonna have to keep coming back. Especially if inflation stays up. And if growth slows down, so that was mainly what I wanted to say. But if growth. Even if growth does continue to rise, like we've experienced in the last three years. We still probably have to come back to it, mostly because I'm worried about the. The line loss, the water loss at thirty seven percent, and the fact that we need to have an extensive. Program for replacing lines, and we, we have been doing those in the last three years, we did it with. Franklin Street.
Yeah, when we're doing a, a repave or an upgrade, we've been paying special attention to our water lines, right?
Yep, exactly.
It's just old.
It's very old, you know, we got hundred year old lines. And so anyway, those are my comments. And it's beautiful here, it's seventy degrees, and we're about ready to go potty surf.
Great, wonderful, happy for you.
But I did lose, I did lose two trees today in the storm. Old trees.
Three, great, all right, awesome, I'm gonna hang up and you can watch the rest of the meeting now.
Okay.
Like we brought like a tin can and a string there, okay. Okay, any other questions for Cron and Associates, any of you from the audience, I've touched upon Cron's.
Excuse me, Buzz, I've got one more question, sure. Our biggest customer. Both with electric and water. And. We hit them pretty heavy here lately with our bar department. And I didn't know if any of your communities have done anything. To help the school systems with a special rate or something.
Well. Good question. There, there are two schools of thought on that. Number one, Indiana is a cost based state, so technically if we're providing a break to one group. We're creating a subsidy with another group, so that, that, that's one, one argument, but. We are, we go away with the private hydrants, I think schools had several of those private hydrants, so that's somewhat of a, of a break for them. But. As a general rule. I think Jenny would say, efficient, they don't, they don't allow you to have. Discounted rates, lifeline rates, things of that nature. We're a cost based state, but. Not saying that. I think, you know, well, you're not regulated by. So you've got a lot of that. There's something that you want to do. Maybe there are other things. Police support there, I know some places.
We do a fifty fifty deal with an officer.
That, that's an expensive effort right there. A lot of. School systems have had. Kids involved in having police officers. If they do a split like that. Something to think about, I, I don't know.
And back to the private. Hydrants again, we have several like out here Tractor Supply, and they are behind vents on their property. When you talk about doing away with it, you're talking about doing away with the building, only right?
Correct.
Okay, so if anything happens, it's still their maintenance, their problem.
They're, they're gonna pay the same monthly fee, you know, if they're two inch meter, they're gonna pay fifty dollars a month. Right. Now, that might be a little bit less than what they're paying right now. Forty dollars a month on tour. Yeah, you know, that was something that. Talked about Scott, he felt that. A lot of those big businesses were. They pay to put in those hydrants, they pay to. Maintain everything on their end. I, I could go either way on that, you know. But you should do away with private hydrants or not, in terms of billing. It's not gonna impact the rate study significantly. We, we basically incorporated what, what Scott had suggested.
Chris, you may be able to answer this, if like a Tractor Supply, that water runs through the meter that we charge for before it goes to those hydrants, right? Private hydrants or not?
No. I think the only time that it goes through the meters before it goes to the hydrants is the school. Leave the meters at the road before it branches to the hydrants, because I know when we fill. For, I, for our tankers, that we always spill at the school, that way it's not metered, right?
Okay, so we have two separate issues, first we need to. What's the order on this, do we need to talk about the capacity fee first, so we can put that in there and then?
Have that on your today as a blank, you are going to introduce an ordinance tonight.
Okay.
In preparation for July twelfth, public hearing. And so the blanks need to be filled in tonight.
Right.
To properly introduce the ordinance. After all, there are.
Right.
But that, that should, that decision should be made, so we can pencil it in and then have a.
Have a complete ordinance for the public in preparation for the public hearing, okay, and the water meeting and all that that's happening in two weeks, okay. So we should probably have a discussion on the capacity fee, currently it is a thousand dollars, the proposal. Is changing that to one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then keeping the tap fee at six hundred dollars, that's not really affected by these rates. So let's have a discussion about that first.
Yes, that's, once that blank's filled in, I, I think we're, unless we want to make adjustments to the exhibit A that was proposed.
Do we have to make a motion and all of that to change it to set, or is this, are we doing any of that, or is this just part of the introduction process?
Make a motion to amend this one, to add that number.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to do it or delete it completely.
Okay.
Keep, which will keep the thousand.
Thoughts on increasing the capacity fee to seventeen fifty from one thousand? The system development fee is based off of the number of. Residential units being done.
How much is that, that, that wasn't in the ordinance we had, I didn't know.
I can tell, yeah.
Saw it in the revenue side, but we didn't. We didn't really have that, that, that may influence our discussion on.
Okay, yeah, I'd rather get all the information currently, okay. Okay, system development fee, for residential development containing at least four lots is two thousand dollars. Commercial and industrial development structures up to four thousand square feet is two thousand dollars. Structures over four thousand square feet are two thousand dollars plus, plus an additional fifty cents. Per square foot, and then there's a water system development fee, okay, that was all electric, sorry, and next line item. Okay, water system development fee for residential, commercial or industrial is sixteen hundred dollars, so that is the sum of. The tap fee and the current capacity fee.
So that is the system development charge.
Correct.
There's not a separate.
There's an electric, that was the first stuff I read. New connection or change to existing service. And it just has the capacity fee at a thousand dollars, connection fee price based on line size starts at six hundred dollars. So that's tapping cap, and then there's a water system development fee that looks to me like it's an additional sixteen hundred dollars, is that?
Right now it's thirty two hundred, then if you had the capacity fee, the tap fee and the system.
Can we call Scott?
I think.
He's. He's our resident expert on this, is that okay if we call Scott again? Okay. He's in the water. He was like, I'm done with you.
No vacation.
So the way that this is, is there's new development, and it says new connection or change to existing service, and there is. A water service, and then there's capacity and connection, and then down here, there's just some development. And that's where you get into this water system development fee, residential, commercial and industrial.
Yeah, I, that that wasn't on our radar because it wasn't in those ordinances, and that we weren't sure if those system development charges were something that developers put in lines or something. So I, I don't know, I'm not as, if, if it was just those two charges, I would have said, yeah, you ought to do at least seventeen fifty, but since you have that other sixteen hundred in there. I, I probably still do something, you know. But it sounded like the, for Jenny, they just put system development charge in four years ago. It's very recent.
I think it was like two years ago. I think it kind of went in during the impact fees and all of that. Okay, so then do we want to just leave that alone? We can always go back and change it, right? Outside of the rate ordinance?
Yeah. Any time.
Okay, then let's just leave, like, withdraw the verbiage regarding the capacity fee and any increase with that. We're gonna take that out and just approve the, or entertain a motion to approve the the schedule of rates and charges without that.
We will need to amend the second whereas paragraph. Talks about an increase in capacity basis, we can strike that.
Yes.
And, and then we will add to conflicts, we will put back in that's nothing this order should, like, whether or validate both ordinance two thousand four dash oh two and two thousand three dash.
Okay.
Really, what fancy way of saying we're at stake.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so then do we need a motion to approve this with those amendments?
Those amendments as stated, and I will get you a, a clean copy tomorrow.
Okay, is there any other discussion from us here regarding these?
We do have the right to go back later.
Later and fix it, yes. Once we get clarity, I just don't want to make a decision based on something that is ambiguous, because I don't deal with it every day, or even periodically.
Basically, get thirty-two hundred a house when you have.
Right.
That's, I thought you were only getting sixteen hundred. That's too low.
Well.
Thirty-two hundreds.
It depends if it's a single residence or not, I thought, but maybe not. I know that that hap- that's how it is for electric. And it's only if there's never been water there before. Like, there's Scott and Hannah deal with it all the time. I don't deal with it all the time. So, okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve with the changes that Jeff stated in paragraph two, striking the references to the capacity fee. Is that sufficient, the way I said that?
Yes. So you need a motion.
Yeah.
I will make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the introduction of whatever ordinance. Twenty-three nineteen. All in favor of twenty-three nineteen, signify by saying I are being introduced, yes. I
Hi.
opposed, motion carried. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn, and we will all be back here on July thirteenth at six P M, regular time. Thank you, everyone.